Scott, Colts is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Attention to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Scott. Let's pause for a moment, please. Welcome. What is this, October?
It is.
This is exciting. By the time we get here next time, the election will be over. So happy. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves and their district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes and we provide equity to all speakers and to ensure the meeting is reasonable and lenient. If you have more than information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide lead behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks. As time has elapsed, if you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion, Mr. Bynum, second, Mr. Grove. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, votes no. So order a report of the school board liaison. Speaker test.
Thank you.
You gotta make it short.
Thanks.
I know that I don't.
Although, in public speaking, it is always good, the first thing you do is to pay attention, where's that thing at? And adjust it properly. I didn't do that at the candidate forum until I was like thirty seconds into what I was saying and I realized I'm not even talking into this thing. I didn't know where it was at. It's good to remember.
Yeah, I think we're good today.
Yeah.
Alright, so...
Good ear, okay.
Alright, not a whole lot going on this month, but the band Citrus Cell begins Thursday, October tenth, so make sure to get your fruit. Leo Club will be holding their annual road cleanup along Rock Knossor tomorrow, actually the ninth with Alliance. Juniors and teenagers will be taking a college field trip to the George Mason University on October seventeenth. And then we have homecoming coming up. That will be on Saturday, the nineteenth. And then the NHS blood drive will take place on October thirtieth. So if you guys wanna donate, we don't have many people signed up so far, so you're welcome to come in.
Gary, you should make sure the Red Cross knows about that because they just called me to ask me to donate blood again and they said, they said needs a beret for donating.
Oh, really?
So...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need to have like barely anybody.
I'll come here, when does that date again?
Uh, it's the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Yes.
Thirtieth of October.
Yes.
What time?
Um, we, it's all throughout the day. You can, you can put in for whatever time.
During the school day?
Yes.
Right, it's through the regular days.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Now, it's not open to the whole community though, is it just students and staff?
Mostly students and staff.
Okay. So it's an internal, okay, just as...
But right now, like we have barely any students signed up. Like the requirements are crazy. Like if you're short, like if you're like five-four, you have to be like one hundred twenty-five pounds, which is kinda crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, to give blood, you don't have those requirements.
Yeah.
Did you meet those requirements?
I mean, I'm, yeah, I meet them, but I'm just right there, you know?
Yeah.
You're a rod, you've got to give blood.
You guys have any questions though?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, moving on to donations.
I have several to report. Kemperley Goodwin donated a hundred dollars for the football team. Renee Saddle donated a hundred and fifty dollars to the football team. Amosville Baptist Church donated sound equipment to the high school. BNB Signal donated two thousand dollars to athletics. And Williams Tree Service donated a mom to be used in a raffle for the cheerleaders.
Alright, thanks. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from September tenth? You have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any comments or changes? All in favor, aye? Aye, votes no. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bills?
I did. In order, all three of the... Can we get a separate room?
Yes, please.
I know I'm having tomatoes on the ice cream.
Peas and carrots. Alright, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes donations, Florence bills, tennis and homeschool report? You have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second is bottom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So order Dr. Brimsley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a special report tonight from our mental health innovation team leader and also Bay's committee leader, Kathy Zier-Rose, who's also our school psychologist. And she's gonna give you an update on some packages that they've been putting on throughout September and then this month too. So, come to the podium.
Good evening, and I am... I'm from the shortest person in this room. Here it is.
There we go.
I appreciate the opportunity to share what's going on at the school, at most schools. And as you know by now, every year, this time, the summer here, we join schools across the country and celebrate in October as bullying prevention month. Our theme this year is kindness matters and that echoes the Commit to be Fit team's theme of kindness this month as well. So first I'll share information about what we're doing at elementary school. I gave you a packet. You can see we've gathered a lot of resources for our teachers and staff. So the first packet has to do with the resources at elementary school. So one of the things we're gonna do is hold a poster contest and students are invited to create posters that show why stopping bullying and showing kindness and respect to others is so important in our school. This week, teachers and students are encouraged to read books about bullying. And our guidance counselor, Candy Lama, is reading the book My Secret Bullying on the announcements. And then we'll follow that up with discussion questions in class. And she read half of it this morning and it was kind of a cliffhanger, so I'm waiting to hear the rest of the story tomorrow. The week of October twenty-one to twenty-five will be Spirit Week and in your pack you see this orange, saran-colored flyer. So we'll be celebrating Crazy Socks Day on Monday, Sock It To Bullying. Tuesday, Inside Out Day, Words Can Hurt On The Inside. Wednesday is Unity Day, wear orange to show that we're together against bullying and united for kindness, acceptance and inclusion. Thursday, Pyjama Day, Put Bullying To Sleep, and that is a favorite of our students and some of our staff as well. And then Friday, it's a new one we're gonna try, Career Day. I'd rather be a question mark than a bully. Wear what you would like to be when you grow up, so you fill in the blank. And then the last week of the month, we're planned to read social scenarios on the morning announcements. Then each class will submit an appropriate response and then we'll put them in a drawing and we'll read some of those responses over the announcements, so the best of the school to hear. So in that packet, when you flip through that, you'll see a lot of resources. Some of them will be like colored books for the younger students on bullying theme. Activity pages, like a word search, for example. Then object lessons for the teachers to use that would really bring home the point about bullying. And also I have a list of short videos on bullying themes, so. And another activity this year will be creating sidewalk signs that students place along the sidewalk in front of the school. And so there'll be like little posters about stopping bullying. And then we also provided teachers with pledge forms for the students assigned to show their commitment to, their commitment against bullying. Let's see, and then slide three. At the high school, a kindness shout-out wall was created by the Commit to Be Fit team. I don't know if you saw that in the cafeteria. And this provides space for students and staff to post positive messages. Also, the Commit to Be Fit team and Mrs. Richardson's art students created a Put The I In Kind wall. Where students are encouraged to take photos and post them on social media. The next slide should show an example of that. Did you see that? So you stand where the yellow is and then that's the I. So we're gonna spread some positive happenings on social media, so. Teachers are encouraged to share bullying prevention videos and lead discussions for any flex advisory needs this month. And then I wanted to show you this, something that's new for me and we're gonna distribute these around the building. It's called Take A Confidence, so you can feel free to tear something off for yourself or to give to somebody else.
Well, I think having, giving some resources, you know what, teachers have nothing new already.
That's right.
And, and so it's great to give them, give them some resources.
Well, you can see there's a variety in the packet for different age levels and they can choose what fits best for their students.
Keep it, keep it to yourself or give it to someone.
I have a whole... We have a whole package of them.
I'm really bad at taking compliments. And then high school students will also celebrate Unity Day by wearing orange on October twenty-third. I believe that Red Ribbon Week is also that week. There's a lot going on, homecomings and then before that. And then we'll have Unity Day and then Red Ribbon Week, which as you probably know, that promotes drug and violence prevention, so. I wanna just mention Start With Hello Week. That is kind of been a springboard for our October events because it's related. And if you remember from maybe last year when we mentioned this, Sandy Hook Promise is an organization that was formed after the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. And they developed the concept of Start With Hello Week to encourage youth to reach out to others, especially those who are dealing with chronic social isolation. So we've enjoyed jumping on the bandwagon with that, those activities. So this past September, we implemented activities to support social connectedness. At the elementary school, students wore Hello name badges. Start With Hello bracelets were given to our students to wear, Thank You Shannon, that was enjoyed by all. Each student was given a smiley face sticker to give to another student to brighten their day. So these are things that happen different days of the week. Slide six. You can see, actually, one more, that right there. High school peer mentors visited the elementary school and interacted with students through lunch on two different days. And you can see the kids really enjoy that. The next slide, please. And this year, we, we really enjoyed that new divider in the cafeteria. We found that we can place things on it. So we put the letters hello and the students came and wrote little notes introducing themselves and also writing positive notes across the cafeteria. Okay, and then next slide, please. I had to put that one up there. That was one of our spirit days. We had a spirit week as well during Start With Hello Week. And if you haven't had a chance yet, you'll see some other pictures from, and a nice description of Start With Hello Week on our highlights and happenings newsletter. That's what I have for this evening, so I just wanna thank Dr. Brimsley and the school board members for your ongoing interest in this topic and support of our efforts.
I just had a question about, I read in the paper, it's a really nice profile of Kathy Sickler. And one of the things that I thought was really important that she said was that we don't wanna make bullies feel... I mean, people who are bullying often are exhibiting those behaviors because they have something wrong going on. And I just wanted, how are you communicating that to the kids? Like anti-bullying makes it feel like the bully isn't a bad guy or like your classmates might be bad guys, but I'm wondering how, in an age-appropriate way, you can, you can say, you know, everybody can change, nobody wants to be bullied really at heart. And how are you communicating that?
Well, the way, the way I look at it is bullying and kindness are incompatible. So what my approach is to provide or to build a positive school climate. So we're building kindness and respect and tolerance of differences, including other children. And I will say too, what I was thinking about this this evening before I came over here, you know, the old image of the school bully, a big kid on the playground beating up a little kid, isn't so much what we see. What we see is the more subtle social issues, negative verbal comments. And face it, as adults, we see it all over, all over the internet, you know? So we're working on building relationships, building kindness, kindness and respect. And you know, you mentioned like trauma. One of the key factors of trauma centers of schools is building connectedness and belongingness. And so that's what this is all about. So that's kind of the big picture approach I kind of am taking.
Yeah, 'cause I always, I feel like it's good to let kids know that they can change.
Right.
There are other ways. You know, from preschool, you say, some kids push, you know, they just kinda push or hit. And it's not, and they're just trying to figure out a way to reach out. They don't know a different way and, and they're just so teaching. And they're just saying that it's not as if someone who's done something mean once is gonna be mean the rest of their life. Because that's really important, you know, important to teach kids and show them, and then you can see that. I like that kindness approach. I just wanna make sure that there isn't an enemy within our reach. So, you know, none of our kids are enemies. They're all learning all the time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. Alright, and the only other report that I have is our annual SIPA policy review. So that's the one where you have to read it in public and make sure everyone sees you review it.
You're not gonna read this to us.
I am not.
Are you reading the whole thing?
No, you just need to review it and I'll give you a couple.
Have we given us a couple minutes to read it in public?
To be compliant, that's what we must do.
You gonna read it online?
I have read it before.
I read it.
Okay.
Except for speed reading, keep reading.
Yep.
You can sign on.
You did your homework, you have read it.
Good job.
Right.
Well... I read it.
But then we read it in public.
No.
Because we have one year.
Yeah, my wife was sitting right by this kitchen.
Robin came and read it to us one year. I felt, I felt that was...
I'm sorry.
I felt sorry for her.
I felt sorry for her.
You felt sorry for her?
Alright, so...
It's almost like we need a remediation or something.
I like the idea that you can read it.
Anyway, we are all aware. We are all aware, are we?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
We're good. Okay, and that concludes this report of the superintendent?
Thank you.
Please.
We're good.
Please don't. Okay, a report from Headwaters representative?
I have a report. Okay, let's see. Anne Simon gave a, gave the Star, sorry, who is the Starfish program manager, gave a report to the Headwaters board about the Starfish program. And it's, because there are new board members, they're just reviewing different parts of what Headwaters is doing. After School has thirty students, more than thirty students, which is a good number. And the session goes until October seventeenth and there's Lego building, arts and crafts and outside games. Reed has also started off, it has two new volunteer mentors and several returning mentors. And it meets Wednesday in thirty afternoons, a half hour for each of the kindergarten, first and second grade. The Skydome Fanatarium came to RSCD as auxiliary gym on the twenty-seventh of September. It was co-sponsored by Headwaters and RLEP, which was a neat partnership. Their volunteers, the RLEP volunteers told about their Dark Skies initiative and their events. And all the students saw the show during school hours. And then the evening program was also hosted by PTO, provided snacks. There were about seventy-five people who came to that Friday program, two shows, which is really good attendance. We, we were reading these public things. And three people showed up and the wonderful thing was you always like meeting one of those. Always at other...
The image.
So, so it's kinda neat. I just really think that's a great, a great testimony to, you know, learning fun is really marketable. Kids, yeah, kids brought their parents back. There were, there were homeschool families, there were several Wakefield families as well. And so it was really, it was, social media was a good way to, to cover it. But, and, but people kinda dragged their parents back. There was actually an alumni game going on, a softball game. So some of the kids came, like, can I go? And so that was really neat to have that exciting thing to do for the kids. And then in recognition of another big collaboration, collaboration with Rapflow, there's going to be a, a, a party in the courtyard for the, for the major donors and volunteers. That'll take place on October eighteenth, Friday, a week on Friday.
What time?
And that will be at five-thirty. And, and that's, and yeah, and we'll make sure you guys will know that's five-thirty. And yeah, there's plenty of a lot of RSCPs. There's, there are teachers who will use it, have used it, people who've helped weed in, all kinds of things. And Headwaters was the, was the big donor to that, one of the leading donors, head from Hell Hunter. So we're grateful for this great collaborations that are happening.
Yeah, it's really impressive.
And there have been people in that courtyard every time I visit the school, every time, which I've never seen that before, so it's, it's great. And like, did you see the picture of the four-age chess club out there with the giant chess? Our neighbor donated the giant, you know, cubicle-sized chess.
That's great.
Really, yeah, it's just a fun...
Get the industrial art class, make checkers, you know?
Oh, yeah. Well, they can make them out of those, the wood that's stacked right out there, the wood from the... They're gonna have each other. The wood from the cherry trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They make checkers, that'd be kinda cool, making checkers out of a, out of a tree.
Yeah, just out of...
I mean, I could try a tree in art, yes.
And you could even, you know, do some research on it. It's neat, it's neat, like, it's important. It's always summer here, so it's warm here, sure.
We have two more storms, I have to clean the trees.
Yeah, so that concludes the Headwaters report. Now, is that ready?
Thank you. And did you ask?
I was making apple butter, so RSP.
Give it to me.
This was the annual joint meeting between the academic advisory board and the governing board from Mount Vista Governor's School. And they include their annual data about how kids did last year, what the goals are for the year. And we actually had this year a student from Faulkier County, but still our program, so you have to brag on all the kids, you know? That actually made it to the Intel National Science Board and placed third.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, International Intel.
International.
International, placed third with her design of a, if she, and there's a girl in computer science who designed an app that is for, for integration and with your GPS systems. And it actually, she did all this data research on traffic lights and their timing and sensors and how inefficient it is for the environment because of emissions and travel time. And she did all this statistical analysis and made the app work, so it actually reads that and talks to the traffic light to be more efficient based on the data gathering. So her, her app that she created, her through a lot of coding and it was amazing to see. So she actually placed third and actually has a lot of calls from Google Maps.
And I'm sure some, from municipalities that would like to see the traffic flow.
Yes, yes. So she, she created the programming to actually measure the timing and all of it. It's incredible. So I was like, whoa, our kids get to go to that, that helps facilitate that kind of learning. So, you know, everyone's success can be shared there, so it was incredible.
Thanks. This next item, it's a report in special. It says school board representation for regional special education program. How's that discussion gonna roll? Let's talk about it.
Well, I figured Carol could give us some information on that because it is a fairly known... You can discuss how you want to.
We, we used to be a part, we represented the board like years ago.
Yes, so if you can search back in your memory to one of my previous exciting presentations, when I talked about the regional tuition program. So we are riding on the coattails of Faulkier County to have a regional program. So last year in the budget, this little pot of money appeared that we hadn't seen before for regional special education programs to the tune of fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So for the next six months, we tried to figure out how we were supposed to access that money. So lo and behold, a report comes due that helps me to understand what we need to do to access that money. So what we were required to do was to have a memorandum of understanding with the Faulkier County School Board that says we will work with them to establish ways that we can come together to serve high-needs special education students across our two counties. So basically, they have their pot of money, we have our pot of money, but we have the opportunity to collaborate with them. And likewise, they can with us if we want to share our resources in serving these students who have what they call high-intensity disabilities. So in order to have that, we are supposed to have quarterly board meetings. And each county is supposed to have a school board representative that would go to those meetings. It's my understanding that Faulkier County Superintendent will serve as the head of the program and their special education director will serve as the advisor to it. I'm sure I will get to be a part of that. And then they requested that we appoint or have a volunteer, a one board member to serve on that regional committee.
And, and when's the next, when is the next meeting that...
We have not established any meeting dates yet. Faulkier is currently doing the same thing we are. They are coming together to select a board member to be representative and then we'll establish our first meeting from there.
This is a pretty small group.
It'll be a small group.
Right, and that's the way I figure.
So does anybody have a special interest in being on that? Or it's a quarterly meeting, so it's not...
Yes.
But is it, it's probably gonna be during the day?
That hasn't been decided yet, but that would be nice if it could be during the day.
Where? Probably in Faulkier County.
Probably Faulkier.
Probably.
I, I...
And so when we do this nomination, we do it for a year? Or can we, can it float and we just pick another board member when it's time to go to the next meeting? No? We need to assign someone?
Yeah, we need to have that one person, yes.
Well, and we probably would put this in the rotation at our organizational meeting each year, just so it's part of what we do. But because it's hitting at this time frame, we have to...
Right, so we'll pick somebody to serve from now until the end of the year, calendar year.
Yep.
And then we visit January. Okay, that's...
My body's in the B and B. I can do it if Larry does. Yeah, it's longer than the old. As long as it's not on Wednesday.
That's pretty...
Tuesdays are hard to beat.
Yeah, Tuesday's the same reason we have to do Tuesday.
So, let's say, yeah, let's say we have our member, C.M. Meyer.
We're gonna need that as an action item.
Yeah, okay. And...
Thank you very much.
And try not to meet on...
Wednesday.
Wednesdays, right? And then in January, we'll be... So that'll be a motion. Direction, how we do that? Alright, thanks Carol. I knew this was gonna, remember I said, it's gonna cost us something, right?
Knew it.
I knew it.
Well, I would assume that Faulkier's pot of gold is a whole lot bigger than our pot.
I bet.
So we're putting pennies to dollars.
They couldn't have got their pot of gold properly without some people like us, gentlemen. Alright.
That's true.
That's why they love us.
So they have to do a little something that we want.
Alright.
Tagging along, you'll be good for it.
Thanks, thank you, Carol. Alright. Public comment. Is there a poll public? Would you like to address the board? State your name and your district and...
Curtis Crawford, district is unknown, 'cause I just moved back to Rappahannock and relive Spurville.
You're Piedmont. Piedmont.
Well, they think I'm in the other one. I'm hoping this is...
In the south.
That's true. But anyway, I'm with the Rappahannock Little League tonight. I've met with Robin, Courtney and Eric. We're trying to get another softball field. We have a problem of enough, not enough... We're trying to get another softball field, we have a, a problem of enough, not enough fields and a lot of players.
It's a good problem to have.
That is the only other way.
Yeah. So based on what I was told, I need to come here tonight and get on the agenda to talk to y'all next month about doing this. I do have to go back before our board to move forward, 'cause it's just, right now it's exploratory, which I got the information that I need. And it's, if this works out the way that I want to, I'm hoping to get donations where it won't be no cost to the school from volunteers and stuff, we just have to see how that, how that goes. I have an excavator that will do the work already, but I just, I can't get too far ahead of myself trying to get all of them.
So just so I understand, is it, when you talk to other school folks, you're talking about a new field?
A new field, which would be at the elementary school, behind the school board shop, where the, when I was in school, there was a ball field there.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Right up on top, on the top left. And we met with Eric this morning and we can work with the soccer fields of the day or not, you know, fringe and all the.
Yeah, he was, he was excited about your meeting, that it'll, it'll benefit the soccer as well as the baseball.
First, it's gonna be a dirt field or a grass field?
It's gonna, mainly what's behind the elementary school right now, it's gonna be a dirt infield with grass on.
Grass field. What are you gonna do about the backstop?
Uh, that's, we're gonna do the backstop, the fence, the whole nine yards. We're gonna have to, because you got the cars coming up the road, plus you got the soccer's, plus, you know.
Driving down two-eleven, I noticed that, at the auction house, that softball field is just four feet of weeds. I wonder, huh?
There's no program there right now.
I wonder, I wonder if they'd be willing to.
Not gonna happen.
Huh?
Been there, done that, it's not gonna happen.
And I, I was thinking about getting their backstop.
Uh, I think they're.
Saying whether or not they would be willing to sell or donate their backstop.
I can ask her, but I think the, she's got it leased the way it is, but I mean, don't quote me on this, but I think there's a group that's gonna use that right now as part of the, I guess church group or something that already has it.
Okay, it was just a thought.
Yeah, I've explored several different places to try to make the same.
No, I don't, I don't mean going there, 'cause that's, that's another, that's another ballgame. I was just thinking about, if they're gonna let that field go and just destroy it, we might as well see if we can get part of it.
It's a good ask.
Huh?
It's a good ask.
Good ask.
Yeah, definitely.
And we give her a nice letter of donation, right off.
I need to talk to her about something else anyway, so I'll ask her.
It's a good backstop.
Yeah. And screen along the road, right?
Yeah.
So what would we have to do about the field, we just say, go ahead and do it?
Well, what, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, during public comments. What we directed Mr. Crawford to do, and he has done very well, is involve anyone who may be affected first by that and then draw up a proposal that he will then bring back to you, as long as he has all those pieces together. But basically, it's on our, the property that we currently use anyway for some athletic stuff and, and physical activity. And so it doesn't look like it'll be an issue at all. And then Robin, of course, from a facility standpoint, is working on, you know, making sure we can do all the permitting for any drainage and any excavation and all of that, just to be sure it's all worked out.
That's good drainage.
Absolutely, it has to be done that way, so just making sure that's all done upfront. And he's been wonderful in communicating with us and everybody involved seems excited about it. So it sounds like a win-win to us, and.
So the only, the only dilemma really then is where do people park if they're gonna go to a game that's there?
It's a practice field.
Just a practice field?
Well, actually, since we've talked.
Maybe it is.
Our last conversation that I had with Courtney and Robin was that it could be possibly used for the school, for the, you know, the lower teens and all. And we could actually use it as a game if we do it the way we talked about this morning.
Neat.
Which, you know, we could do like the soccer and park some on the road. But where it's at, they could actually park in the school parking lot at the bottom of the hill, right? But it's actually where we're proposing is right up on top, soon you.
On that end, okay, all right, it's on that end, yeah, all right, got it.
So like I say, it's, I've gotta go to our board first, I mean.
I have to get, you got a lot of parts in it, Curtis.
Yeah, it's a little, few parts involved, yes.
I appreciate you stepping up to the plate. Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else tonight? All right, moving on. Under action items, there's a motion to appoint Luciana Meyer to the, the school board representative of the regional special education program through December thirty-one. We have motion, Mr. Groves, there's a second. Mr. Groves, all in favor, aye. Aye, thank you. Is there any new business?
Relocate.
Our next regular board meeting is November the twelfth, six-thirty, in the same location. Entertain a motion to go into closed session, Mr. Grove?
I move the board to adjourn to closed session for the following purpose. To discuss and consider the appointment of staff, members of professional class five and coaching positions, resignation of class five positions, conduct administrative lead hearing for school to become particularly code section two point two, that three-seven-one-one, A and one.
Got the motion, Mr. Groves, there's a second. Second, Mr. Groves, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. So we'll take a short recess. How long are we gonna be in closed session, do we think?
We need to certify. Yeah, we have to certify.
We have certified.
Certified.
Chris, you have a certified, Greg Grove certified.
Great to find him certified.
Leslie Mel certified?
Zan Meyer.
Okay, the first thing we're gonna do is to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
We have a motion from, Chris, second, is there a, do we have a second?
Second.
Second is bottom, all in favor, aye. Aye, close, go, this is order. And also a motion coming out of closed session related to twenty nineteen dash twenty dash zero one.
Move that the board suspend employee twenty nineteen dash twenty dash zero one without pay. Or is the recommendation of superintendent Dr. Green?
We have a motion from Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer, all in favor, aye. Aye, close, go. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second is bottom, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, go.